Okay, good evening. It is Monday, March 25th. It is 6:04 PM and I'll call the Groton Board of Education regular meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Matthew, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do this first?
Recognition.
The comments from citizens.
The recognition comes first.
Okay, recognition.
All right. I am pleased to be able to recognize our Board of Education. This is Board of Education Month and we have a certificate for everyone. And on this certificate it says, "Thank you for your dedication and commitment to the Groton Board of Education and your tireless advocacy on behalf of the children." And I can certainly say that for the board members that have been with me and our new board members. And I think I had even mentioned it, that during this budget process, I have seen such commitment and tireless energy and effort. And it's always been about our students. So the focus has always been, and I do appreciate from each and every single one of you, your commitment. It's, as I said, it's a volunteer position, but it feels like another job. So, and it is because of the level of work that goes into it and the hours of time. So I couldn't thank you enough. And Andrea Ackerman, I see you on the screen, or I know you're there. So I will send yours forward. And Dean, anti-pass.
Undeserved, but thank you.
And Adrian Johnson, thank you. And Rob Mead. Matthew Shulman. Ian Thomas, thank you so much. Beverly Washington, I know you're out there and I make sure you get your certificate. Jay Whiteloff as our chair.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan.
I didn't miss anybody, right? I'm good? I got you all. All right, thank you very much. Couldn't do this without you.
Okay, our next order of business is comments from citizens. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. Citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members who only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation cannot respond during the comment to citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment? Is there anyone online?
Do we see anyone in the chat box at all?
I am looking at the attendees. I don't want to peruse their name.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the student representative report.
We have Dave here. Dave and Dave.
It's the epic Dave table back at it. This is on. Yes, Dave table back at it again. Didn't do a slide this month, didn't think I was going to be here tonight. I have to remove the slide in here. But an update from Fitch High School for the month of March. This is basically all of the insight that I've been able to gain in multiple different conversations. I try to do these conversations with people and interview people at the most randomized basis possible. Through all separate grades, I try to hit at least four people from each grade to get an accurate response.
Oh, there you go.
And this is what I got from all four grades this month. So we'll start with the slight negatives. A big thing that has happened over the past month, we've seen this period happen a lot. I like to call it a graze period where everybody starts to kind of zone out before spring break and kind of needs to be brought back in a little bit. We've had a couple of instances of fights occur at Fitch High School and a whole lot, even one today unfortunately, and a whole lot of drama that has come from these fights. This is a time of year where everybody's stressed. We're all trying to do a million things. We're all tired. We want spring break to come more than anything. And this is like a big push for them, as I talked about last month. And I think it is starting to have a bit of a mental impact on some of our students that could be the issue, but from what a lot of I'm hearing is like, "I hate this drama that I'm getting involved in because of these other people in my grade. I don't like how they're becoming a disruption in my classroom or taking things out on the teacher that they shouldn't be taking out on the teacher." But disruptions in the classrooms, disruptions in the hallways, and especially in the cafeteria, nobody likes it when lunch gets cut short because two students start to have a brawl. Everybody wants to eat, nobody wants that to happen. But from the positive side, what I got to hear a lot of this month was support for our extracurricular activities, specifically in all of our spring sports that are starting up this year. We have a new coach for both of our lacrosse teams and both interviews that I've been able to have from my sports perspective was absolutely amazing. They love Mr. Fryer and I can't remember her name at the moment. But Coach Fryer has been doing an amazing job with the boys and everybody that I talked to, from Izzy to Riley to captains, is seeing that they like the environment that they're being given and they think that both of them are treating them with ultimately respect, guidance. And I know that from a baseball perspective as well, not that I play, but my brother does, Dee Hall, in his second year, as everybody calls him, ever since Mr. McGugan stepped down, has taken on the role very vitally as well and is keeping a heavy mindset of continuation on of that powerhouse baseball team that McGugan brought for all these years. From a student arts and humanities perspective, we're feeling, we actually have a lot of amazing opportunities at the moment, a whole lot of field trips. The, our marketing, honors marketing two class actually today got to go up to Foxwoods for a little bit of an expo, talk with some local people who run businesses there that are obviously chains, but to get a better understanding of how they market things towards different people in different environments. And I thought that was a really cool thing to do. Getting to utilize a casino is not something that people usually think of when they think high school board, but I think it was a tremendous opportunity and I got a whole lot of good feedback from that as well. Get the thoughts in order here. Right, our college and careers fair event happened, took place this past month and it was a smashing success. As well with our basket raffle that our class of 2024, my class, the best class, put on as well last Friday, was also another smashing success. We've raised over $8,400 and now every single student's ticket in our eighth grade, excuse me, 12th grade class will be paid for, for our trip to Six Flags. So that's our little highlight from the eighth grade class, we were able to, that was with huge guidance from both Ms. Zerberini and our class council that have been planning this for months. We even had an autographed photo of Mac Jones that we, that was a part of a basket raffle. You did, there we go, that's amazing. I love to hear that. Amazing thing right there. And the community, getting involved with the community, we actually sent out our class council members to ask these community members so that it wouldn't just be the teachers doing work. Giving them exposure to local business community members is a big old perspective that I don't think a whole lot of kids understand today. We go to chains, we work at chains, we don't go to local places and mom and pop shops, but they were, I think we had over 100 local community businesses, which is insane, unheard of, donate. So sorry, I'm rambling now, I'm talking about the best class at Fitch High School at the moment. But that is the spotlight for this month. We are all looking forward greatly to the SAT day after the first SATs were taken. The first digital SAT was taken a couple weeks ago and everybody is extremely concerned about the math portion. I got to step in and sit in on a math SAT prep class, as well as an English math prep class, to ask questions about how they felt they were being prepared for this big old test that's going to be coming for them in a few weeks. And every single junior said, "I'm feeling absolutely horrible about the math because of how hard I'm hearing it is." But Ms. Zerberini and Ms. Verdun are also two doors down and I feel that everybody that takes it is going to be more than confident and more than ready to do so. Last thing, we also had our, we had our testing NGSS, if I'm saying that correctly, wrap up for our juniors. They all said that it was way too long, but they, I think that the things that teachers were putting in place to make sure that they were actually taking the test, instead of doing, which I have seen many, many times, which is this, done, doesn't matter, doesn't affect my grade, I'm going to move on to the next thing. A whole lot of incentives were put out through our administrative staff, as well as our teachers, to give these kids a push, let's say, a push N O two, put it in the engine to get you spinning on all four cylinders or all six cylinders to make sure you're putting back your, all your work that you could put forward to represent our town on that level. And I think that's an amazing thing to put and have that all put together to make sure that we're representing not only our students and our facility, but the board of education to the best that it can be. And that is my report for the month of March. Glad to be here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, not a David. Just wondering why my daughter is hanging around out there.
Is she coming in to give us a report?
I don't know.
Hi Zoe, did you want to give us a report?
While you're here.
Join the double Dave desk.
I know we have, I don't know what you already talked about, but SATs and PSATs are next Wednesday. So the juniors, all the freshmen are for the juniors are preparing for that and also means I get a day off, which is really nice. My class, the class of 2024, we just had our pasta dinner on Friday. Did you talk about how much we raised?
We've raised over $8,400, yes.
Good.
And that helped pay for our class.
Yeah, free senior trip.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was it.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
How's the bathroom situation? Is everything open?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. We have seen a actual huge improvement ever since these detectors were put in. I don't know if it comes from a fear or kids are getting smart and doing it elsewhere. I will speak with full honesty, I will not give you any BS. I do not truly know if they're like, the placement was to stop them from being used in the bathroom. I can tell you that's happening. That's happening. Those kids are in and out of there fast. And I think they picked up on it quick. It only took one kid to get caught and realize and then it spread like wildfire.
There have been more than a guy caught that are with me, don't you worry.
Yeah, then, I think it took, it only takes one kid to realize, oh crap. And then, but I can tell you that we have all of our, we still are at half capacity for our bathrooms, but I'm being told that based on how this pivot goes and everything like that, that it could be possible in the future for us to get back to 100% capacity.
Well, that's what I'm expecting. So I'm going to talk to your principal.
Perfect. And in terms of that bathroom that we talked about last time, that we never really knew was open or closed through the cafeteria, now that it has a vape detector installed, it is open 24/7. And that is taking a lot of, I guess, the pressure off the other three bathrooms and it's able to like make less, I mean, less kids waiting for a urinal, less kids waiting for a bathroom.
So I have to say, I have to thank Sam Kilpatrick and his team and Clint, Dr. Clint Kennedy and his team, because that was really the workings of, we got them free from gas, which we really appreciated through a grant, but getting them engineered, wired, put in, and turned on was a huge feat. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. It did do a tremendous.
And I hope it continues to work.
Tremendous impact on the bathroom situation.
I got enough people with me right now.
Good.
Thank you for the update and thank you for all the efforts on that.
Thank you for the question, I should have clarified that.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the superintendent and assistant superintendent reports.
All right, so as you said, with SAT day coming up and some NGSS that's rolled out, we're getting ready to assess our third through eighth graders and 11th graders. And Dr. Piazza is really boots on the ground, working with the test coordinators and making sure everything is ready, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
All right, and Dave got me started, definitely. So I'm going to take his lead also. I prepared no slides, so you could just listen to my, to my voice. But we are preparing for, and we've already begun, as you've heard, some of our state testing. The principals, assistant principals, and test coordinators are working with me along with Denise Doolittle and Lauren Cassidi. We've already met this past week, last week, to finalize plans and the communications that go out to faculty, to staff, and to families. As Ms. Austin was saying, our third grade to eighth grade students, they're going to take the Smarter Balanced Assessments. I'm assuming most of you know at least generally what these, what these tests are, but I just want to review them for everyone. The Smarter Balance, or the SBACK as it's called, for English Language Arts and Math. Students in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade will take the Next Generation Science Standards Assessment, that's the NGSS. And as you've heard, that's already begun at the high school. And students in 11th grade also take the SAT. And that has the verbal or the ELA and the math sections. All assessment systems are computerized and they also have accommodations for identified multilingual learners or students with IEPs or 504s. The updates that I was able to get from Mr. Diskid and Mr. Brown over at the high school, again, this has already been said, but the NGSS, that test, the K-12 Science Content Standards, all 11th grade students are expected to take this assessment. It's a state required test and the assessments have already been completed. They were done between March 4th and March 15th. Happy to report that we met the 95% participation rate. And again, they're going to continue to look for ways to incentivize, incentivize to increase student performance on the assessment, as Dave was alluding to. As far as the SATs, as you heard, those are coming up. Again, for those of you who might not know, all PSATs and SATs are now digital. All 11th grade students are required to take the SATs and then we provide the PSATs for ninth and 10th for practice. So April 3rd will be a half-day schedule and the fourth and fifth will be makeup sessions. And again, also looking for ways to incentivize these as well for students. So they'll continue to work on that. But otherwise, we'll provide updates and generally what we do for the board is, once we are able to get our scores back and analyze them and go over them with the principals, they generally report, correct me if I'm wrong, in September on the results for their particular buildings and that's when they also share with the board their goals for the year, which are, a few of them obviously are based on those test scores. So we look forward to providing you updates and we'll let you know once everything's complete and all the participation rates.
We'd like to give you kind of a sneak peek at a COW so you can kind of see the kind of assessments that they are. They're based on the Connecticut Core Standards. And the science one in particular has kids really doing kind of AI experiments on computers and it's a lot to keep track of. But I really think it's kind of, are you as smart as a fifth grader to see kind of how the kids are being assessed and the comprehension level for the ELA test and the mathematics piece. It's a lot of problem solving, but it really has all of the standards of mathematics. So I think we'd like to be able to take you through that a little bit and actually show you the end year report card that we get, so that we can show you that it really is a more comprehensive assessment while it is very academic in nature. And we get scores and we also look at growth over time. It also looks at attendance and absenteeism, it looks at suspensions, expulsions, it disaggregates the data. So it really, we used to have something called a yardstick here, where we looked at how many kids are participating in extracurriculars. We looked, the board really wanted to see things more holistically, not just the scores. And the state has started doing that, even looking at what's our arts access. So it's really pretty comprehensive and I look forward to bringing that to you. So you can kind of see, it will be a report card from the year before, but at least it'll give you kind of insight to what you're going to expect when the new scores come out. So we'll do that.
Small question. It might be a dumb question and I'm hoping that I know the answer to it, but now that the SAT is switched over to electronic, I'm hoping the English portion is in some sort of program that doesn't have auto correct?
That is a great question.
Yes.
Thank God.
It is the same as the, we use, I can speak from an AP perspective as well. From all of our AP testing that I think they keep talking about how they want to get it to digital, but I know for all of my AP tests that I take for AP Psychology, Mr. Panucci uses something called Lockdown Browser. Everybody knows about Lockdown Browser. And it takes away your ability, without it, you can click on the little, the little cheat and put the right word, but it'll still just underline, it won't even underline it in red. You truly do have to know what you're saying on both the AP and SAT.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Adrian.
Yeah, just a question about SATs. Do, does the district pay for those tests or do the students pay for the SATs?
The district.
A state.
Or the state, yeah.
It pays for the SAT.
The students do not.
It's one of our state tests. PSAT, they're paid for. An AP test, NIB, the district has paid for.
I remember that.
And that's really given more access to our students. We've noticed, not only have we, you know, increased the numbers of kids participating, but certainly last year, there was just about a dozen kids who did not take the AP and everybody else did, so we were glad to see that.
And to be able to give it during the school day.
Right.
Also is a benefit.
All right, and then one other question. Is the climate survey, has that been done yet?
It's currently out.
All right.
And available for, for parents, students, and faculty.
Staff, yeah.
Quick follow-up on that. This, the climate survey that's out now, was there a, did we put a question in there as far as like seeking permission for us to review the raw input?
So could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
I was asking if the climate survey, we had talked in previous meetings about adjusting some of the questions so that, you know, people who are filling out the climate survey would be aware that, you know, the results, the answers would be shared with the board in some fashion. And I was wondering if this version of the climate survey had been adjusted for that or if that's a future climate survey that we need to make that adjustment.
I don't believe it was, but I, but I do, you know, we can have a conversation with, you know, with the union and we can have that conversation outside of the survey. But I don't believe it was changed, because I think it was already completed while we were having those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions.
One other quick question about the testing. What sort of assistive technology is available for?
Yeah, there is, I wasn't going to get too deep into it, but I was, I can mention that they do, we do have alternate assessments. I'm trying to see here, Denise Doolittle provided me some information. Alternate assessments are available depending on a student's disability. Those could include modified tasks, materials, or assessment formats to assure accessibility.
And it would come through their IEP or 504 if they had modifications.
Yeah, and that could be anything from reading direction, you know, somebody just reading directions to them. Some might even have, you know, someone reading the entire passage to them and things like that. But each student's different, obviously, according to their IEP.
But that's something I think if we bring back to the COW and invite Denise, she can give you kind of that level of detail for, to understand it better.
I would greatly appreciate.
Okay, we'll do it.
That opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're now at the portion of the agenda for Director Finance.
So this is my, is this on? My once a year with good news to start off.
Oh, yay.
Just to get everyone to smile for a second.
Wait till we get to Sam.
No, so that's, that's my punchline, until Sam speaks. This is really our first month that we have not had a significant property event or big cost event, so we'll see what Sam has to say. Secondarily, for my partners on the finance committee meeting, we did receive updated invoices from the bus company, which actually match our contract now, so I feel super comfortable in paying those. So that's good news. That's been, you know, five, six months in the making here, so that feels good. On the finances, you know, we went through some of this in the COW, but it was really quiet this month. We've got about 8% of our, our budget remaining, a little over $6 million. I mean, this month in particular, and I actually expect this next month as well, we really just had our big, our normal expenditures, utilities and salary and benefits. And you don't see much movement now as we get closer, as you remember, because we encumbered a lot of that, right? So it's really just movement now between encumbrance and payments. Next month, if we can catch up on the, the bus contract payments, you'll see a little bit of that. But those have been, you know, anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000 a month, so hopefully we can get those caught up. The one maybe not great news is we had another month of fairly high claims on the health insurance side, if you looked at the dashboard, unfortunately. We're about $70,000 over what our, our estimate was going to be and over last year. So, you know, we're still clipping at this million plus number or so a month. I do have a little bit of good faith in next month's number. So next month, we anticipated about a million, almost a million three claims, you know, it's, it's a, February in and of itself has been traditionally a big month for us, so I'm hoping that's a high estimate, we can catch up a little bit from the month of January. On the utility side, electricity is, is running, as I've mentioned the last few months, really just spot on to last year, so I fully expect that number to hit what we incurred last year. If you look at the natural gas, we had a little bit of a spike this month, but if you look over four years, it's kind of interesting. There's been two months that have been normal and then two months that have spiked. And then you run to March and everything kind of normalizes again. So, you know, I think this is one we'll just have to watch next month and see if it comes back down to its normal levels. And then really, nothing on oil. I mean, oil was down a little bit, but we've already started to get the, the margin voices and that's coming back up. So I think that's going to be just sort of a normalization over two months there. I really fully expect all three utilities to come in at levels that are similar to last year. They haven't really moved off track here in the last three or four months.
No questions in particular, I just wanted to thank the finance director. I received your emails following up on the, the, the utility question, as far as like at Northeast Academy.
Oh, yeah.
And also the non-lapsing account information, so I'll review that information. It's in the FAQ spreadsheet now, so the whole board has access to it.
I think it's coming up on the finance and facility agenda too.
Yeah, Ian, I think we were trying to dive a little deeper on that on Tuesday or so at the finance committee meeting.
And that invitation still stands?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes, it does.
Okay, then I'll plan accordingly.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Good evening. There are about five things that I'd like to talk about tonight. I guess the first thing, the vape detectors, contrary to popular opinions, Dr. Kennedy and I don't actually go and do all of that work.
I said your team.
The work was actually done by two people in my department, Dan Strang and Joe Montgomery, and Andy Kidd and Tim Candy from the IT department spent quite a bit of time getting those things up. So we appreciate all the work guys, the guys did to get that up and running. And as Dave said, they've been pretty effective. So hopefully we can get some more as we move along. They're not inexpensive, that's for sure, so we have to take a look at that and see if we can get any other grants to add some more. Second item is the Charles Barnum Roof Project. I think there'll be a discussion a little bit later in this meeting about that, so I don't have anything to add to that until we get to that point. Solar at Groton Middle School and Mystic River School, the, they have submitted an application to the federal government. There are some additional reimbursements that are available for those projects since the project started. So the application is in with the federal government. We expect to hear from them any day as to whether we're qualified for the additional money that may come back to us. So once we hear one way or the other, I'll let you know.
For Mystic River?
Both Mystic River and Groton Middle School. So we will be flipping the switch soon and as soon as we have a date for that, we will advise you as to that date, so that you may want to come for that ribbon cutting or switch flipping, whatever you want to call it. Should be an exciting day. Groton Middle School field lights, we need some more, you may have noticed that we've had a lot of rain lately. Well, in order to finish the project, it's got to kind of dry out up there, because the trucks actually have to get pretty close to the poles in order to do some of this work. So we're waiting for some more drying to take place and we have three more light poles to put up. Those are on the walk, on the walkway between softball field and the artificial field, so the area will be lighted at night, going back and forth there. So those lights, poles, which are much shorter, will be installed and then the contract will be regrading and seeding and a general cleanup of the area, so we're waiting for that. So we are expecting that they will be operational by April 15th, so again, I'll let you know as soon as that takes place. I'm working with the maintenance coordinator now on planning projects for the spring break. He will not be going to Fort Lauderdale, he'll be here during that week. The, and now for the bad news, as Dave put it. So we, we learned last week that we had a problem with maintaining pressure in the heating system at the central office. This morning, when we added water to bring up the pressure, it, it was back down within about 10 minutes. So there's definitely leak down in the tunnel in the building. Unfortunately, it's about 300 feet at the other end. there's definitely leak down in the tunnel in the building, unfortunately, it's about 300 feet at the other end of the tunnel, at the other end of the building, from the access point in the boiler room. So we have the contractor in today, we shut the boilers down, tomorrow we will be repairing the leak that we know about, and investigating further to make sure there's nothing else additional down there in that tunnel that we need to take a look at, so. Just one more item, not going in our favor this year. So that would be all five items, I believe.
When you say tunnel, crawl space?
Yeah, yes.
Full basement?
No.
No, no, it's a crawl space, and it really is a crawl space, the, the ceiling down there is probably three and a half feet tall, but there are also, all the pipes, all the heating pipes and everything are on the ceiling in that crawl space, so you are, I mean, you can't duck walk, you have to crawl.
Also, did the contractor provide the ed specs on the roof project?
On the roof project, yes, I have the ed specs as of this afternoon.
But we just got them, so you haven't had a chance to see it.
Is, we said we were going to discuss and vote on this later, but without our having time to review the educational specifications, I don't really think that we can, we can vote on that tonight. I think if time is of the essence, we could insert a special meeting before the next COW, and in the meantime, if you could distribute the ed specs electronically, so everybody would have a chance to review them. I really don't think we want to review them.
I could do that, or if you wanted me to bring it to Finance and Facilities first, we could do that, too, I'm trying to think what the date would be for the next.
I'm just wondering how, how tight are the deadlines, do we have any concerns about that?
Well, yeah, we had concerns, it, it was a very tight timeline as it is, and anything that goes wrong would delay the project probably until next year, but.
Could we do it at Finance and Facility, then bring it to a COW, and make it a special meeting, so you could vote on it then?
But then that would be two weeks.
Yeah.
It'd be in two weeks.
Well, if you could send us the ed specs.
I'll get these out to you.
Yeah, we, we could insert one before next week's meeting, and move it along. All right, any other questions? Adrian.
Yeah, we had talked about the, the lights in the middle school being on all night, has that been resolved yet?
No, we haven't resolved it yet, we're still trying to figure it out.
All right, I actually heard from a kid, a parent of a child, who said, "Well, I don't think you shut the lights off." How, when, when would we, when would we expect that?
I'm not, not really sure, it's pretty difficult, we're getting the original contractor back in to help us with it.
All right, and then the Fitch Water claim, was there any, any more information with the insurance company on that?
I don't have any information on the insurance, Dave would have the information on the insurance. I did, in the meantime, just before Dave speaks, the, our architect sent a plumbing engineer in Friday, I think of last week, to review it, so I'm waiting for his report. As soon as we get that report regarding the, the piping itself, I'll, I'll share that with you as well.
All right.
But he seemed pretty satisfied with the remedy that we have employed at this point, but if he has any other recommendation, that will be in his report, too, so we're just waiting for that, that could come any day.
So on the, the larger of the two Mystic River claims?
Oh, it was the Fitch one.
The Fitch? Oh, I thought you said Mystic River.
Seventy, seventy thousand or something.
No, I mean, we've, we have the invoice for the replacement of the, of the boiler, but that's, that's about it.
Oh, no, the, the water claim, when the, we think the water came out.
Oh, yeah, no, so the insurance company is not, they're still not in agreement with the coverage on that one? Because they think it's more of a natural event than, than anything else? This is the water coming up you're talking about?
No, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we think that we found a leak in a pipe in a Y-fitting where it was capped off, and the cap had leaked?
We've sent that all to the insurance company, they haven't responded formally, but the broker still does not think they're going to cover us on that one.
So, so, I mean, will they say that that's, that they don't believe it's a covered claim? Do they agree that that's where the water came from?
They'll issue a response to us, they, they haven't issued a response yet.
All right.
I thought you were talking about the, the initial Mystic River, because on that one, they did issue a response recently indicating they're, they're interested in subrogation action, so they're asking for some information around that claim. That's the one I thought you were talking about. So the other, the other Fitch, yeah, they'll issue a formal response, we haven't received that yet.
All right.
But we gave them all the updated information about the Y-fitting.
Oh, they have everything, yeah, they have all the information, yeah.
Dave, I saw your hand.
Just to keep the, the happy, keep it happening to the report, make sure it doesn't go too dark, I, I had a conversation with him before, and I should have brought it up in my report as well. I spoke to, again, completely randomized, four different teachers from all different parts of our school, as we know, we have an old wing, a new wing, two parts of that new wing.
Call it vintage.
Vintage, I apologize, never say old, vintage, my grandparents are vintage. The vintage wing of the school, as well as the new school, and all different types of the classrooms, I wanted to get a high school, excuse me, I wanted to get a science classroom, because they're on that side, facing that side of the building. I wanted to get a 31, or a 100 hallway, a 200 hallway, and a vintage wing classroom as well, to get their feedback on these lights that we put in, I believe, over the past couple of months, that have now been up and running for more than a month. Four out of four said they were amazing, like they, they have been able to utilize the natural sunlight that comes in, especially that 3,200 hallway, where you get an immense amount of solar sunlight all day long. And at some point, I even questioned why we have the lights on, because I'm like, we've got all that sun right there, it's even brighter without it, why use it? Two of them said that they were able to keep it on the lowest setting for over 80% of their day, unless it is raining or anything like that, we're talking bluebirds, ideal, bluebird skies, ideal conditions here. The other two said the wing, vintage wings said they were very bright, and they were very power efficient, but they don't get a whole lot of sunlight over there, but she is, she does like, excuse me, this was giveaway names, how there was a different setting for each, and how there's more than just like on and off, so she's able to adjust it throughout the day to utilize power consumption, and when we talk about power consumption and being more conscientious.
Efficient, we want efficiency.
Yes, conscientious of our consumption to help our Mother Earth, I think that was amazing, so huge props to that, the feedback is excellent, I will continue to talk to more random teachers about how they think the lighting in their classroom is. Pretty random question to be asked on Tuesday morning, but when you get a response like that, I believe it's, it's impactful for the community, so thank you, Mr. K for that.
Yeah, and, and when you're talking to those teachers, you can let them know if there's some adjustment that they need, they just need to let us know, and, and we can do that through the computer, so.
So at the, the COW last week, we spoke briefly about the Athletic Fields Task Force, their request to have the blueprints of the new field house and facilities forwarded over.
The SLAM report, we can get that to them.
I was wondering if there's any progress on that.
I think I had sent it to Sam, they need the SLAM report to the, who would want, who do we send it to, who is the person?
I'll send it to Mark, Mark's on the team.
Romano, yeah, he should actually have it.
He does have it, so.
Okay.
Right, well, I think they wanted this, I think the, the belief was that Romano wanted official direction and clearance to share it with the Athletic Fields Task Force.
I actually think I already emailed him.
For the purpose of their design, like they wanted the design of the field house, the blueprints that were paid for.
Yeah, they should have them.
Sent an email last week, but I'll, if, if there's some misunderstanding there, I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow about it, make sure.
And maybe Mark Berry might be someone to include on that, because he's also on those task force meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, except for the bad news. So next, Committee reports policy.
We have six policies, five this evening, suicide prevention, meeting conduct, graduation requirements, tuition fees, and age of attendance will be coming up for a vote tonight. We're having our next meeting on the 9th of April, 6:00 PM at Central Office.
Thank you, and curriculum, I think Andrea asked if Dr. Phil could report?
Yeah, Dr. Ackerman asked if I would just report out. We met back on, excuse me, March the 7th, and we met with representatives from Fitch High School, they, we talked about the new financial literacy mandate from the state, and how Fitch was going to meet that need, and we also began our elementary, not began, but continued our elementary literacy discussion. We had our K-5 Director of Literacy and Humanities, Mr. Hernandez Corcoran, along with us, we reviewed the timeline that was shared with the board at the last meeting, clarifying all the acronyms, if you remember, and we looked at data, district-wide DIBELS data. Unfortunately, our meeting this past week had to be canceled due to a lack of a quorum, where we were going to look a little bit deeper at the DIBELS data by school, looking at the beginning and the middle year data, but we were not able to meet.
Okay, thank you. If I'm correct, there wasn't a Finance and Facility since our last meeting, but it will be next Tuesday now, so. Beverly, would you like to report on LEARN?
We learned that on, I think it was March 8th, I'm not certain about the date, oh, March 14th, and we had a very interesting and informative presentation from the Stonington School District Superintendent, Mary Ann Butler, who used to be our Assistant Superintendent way back, I think in 2010, I'm, I'm unsure the date. She gave us a very good presentation about what's going on in Stonington. We also discussed the Educator Diversity District Plan for LEARN, and we approved that plan, and we talked about the National School Lunch Program Healthy Food Certification Statement, and the Board approved that. And that was about it, we talked about legislative updates, and hiring for LEARN, which is going along quite well, they're having a positive outcome for hiring, and that's about it. It was a very good meeting.
Thank you, Beverly, thank you for taking the time to do those, and it's good to see you. Let's see, next, I named Ian to Athletic Fields, and boom, they had a meeting. For the first time in.
I had nothing to do with that.
Progress.
I don't know how many times I've said we haven't met, and boom, so if you'd like to report.
Oh, yeah, they discussed just wanting to move forward with getting the designs going and getting some bids, they have a bid that came in that they're considering, as far as some other work, that's, you know, they want to basically just start getting real with, with the progress, but they just want to be able to get the designs kind of more formulated, so.
I'm glad there's some progress there, so, thank you very much, and thanks for taking the time to do that.
Sure.
Matthew, anything from Trails?
Actually, yes, we met this past week, Representatives from Avalonia, Gosa, and Trittown Trails were there. They showed us a map showing that the 29 miles of trails within the town of Groton, the only piece that's not yet completed and marked out, parallels the back of Thames River Magnet School, and I did not hear a firm date, but it is clearly on the agenda.
Thank you, and Library?
Library, we met this week, there's a desire to try to go the quote "last mile" on the one card, and I guess want to be mindful that Clint has a couple of other apples up in the air that he's juggling, but they were thinking that, the thought was maybe in May or June, things would ease off for you, so you could get together with the team, and it's a go, so we're going to try to do that.
Very good to hear. Mr. Kilpatrick, has permanent school building met?
We have not.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next item is the Consent Agenda, all matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion, points of clarification will be allowed, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda. Moved by Rob, a second? Any seconds? Seconded by Jen, so all in favor of the consent, or I'm sorry, any, any points of clarification?
Yes, for the February 26th meeting, the minutes, comments from citizens, Mr. Mike, it's listed as Mr. Mike Whaler. It's actually Way Lee, with a Y at the end of it.
How do you spell it?
W-H-A-L-E-Y.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor with the amendment? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the Consent Agenda passes, I would like to thank Linda Johansson, who has donated $2,000 to the Groton Public Schools Food Services Department, and that has been earmarked to be applied to the district's student lunch debt, thank you very much. So the next order of business, I'll start with Ian and move down, Ian, would you like to read the motion for the first item under Old Business?
I'll make a motion to approve Bylaw 9324, Meeting Conduct and Parliamentary Procedures as a second reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And would anyone from Policy just like to review what the change is here?
I would like to invite Ian to do, address this, because he brought this up, and I thought it was a good thing to bring up.
Thank you. Yeah, long story short, it was just a matter of the recording, broadcasting, and photograph, photographing of meetings section of this policy, I noticed that it was not in great alignment with what the state law was in regards to these things, so I just took the state law and adapted it to speak to the Board of Ed here on a local level, and basically just, you can see all, it was just a lot easier just to strike out everything in the red, like the, the whole thing, and then put in new text, but it mirrors the state law.
And now it mirrors another policy that we have, we have another policy that represents what you've got in the green, so it's definitely corrected a couple.
Yeah, yeah, so now it's just consistent with overall state law and local practice.
Right.
And it's, the, long and short of it, to summarize, it means that anyone that attends the meeting is, is allowed to broad, is allowed to record or broadcast the meeting as they see fit.
The only, the only thing that we're asking is that they not be disruptive in the process of doing so.
Precisely, whatever equipment they have, whatever they do, is not to disturb the meeting.
Right.
All right, is there any other discussion? If this is approved tonight, this will be the second reading, so this will become the policy, so. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor to approve Bylaw 9324, Meeting Conduct and Parliamentary Procedures as a second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes. Dean, would you like to read the motion for the next item, number two, under Old Business?
Yes, I move that we approve Policy P. 3240, Tuition Fees as a second reading.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, would anyone like to summarize what changes are being made here?
So this is already a practice that we have, we actually have four students who pay tuition, and it's at the rate that the Board has agreed, it's actually reduced from the per pupil spending, I think it's about 85% of, so that they're able to participate at Fitch, and it's all based on enrollment, so it just really updates us to what our current practice has been.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Again, this will be a second reading, so after tonight, this will go into effect. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If that's unanimous, any, obviously nobody opposed, no abstentions. All right, so, let's see, Rob, would you like to read the motion for number three?
I move to approve Policy P. 5112, Ages of Attendance. I move to approve policy P 5112, ages of attendance as a second reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Thomas.
All right, and...
So, this is another, you know, legislation has taken care of a difference in age for entering kindergarteners. I think I've explained this to the board, and I think Denise Doolittle has also explained that the age of 22 till the end of that year, so they could even be turning 23 the following year, so that really does extend at the other end services that we're providing under special education. And I know that this legislation is in place in both aspects, but I'm hearing that there's some kind of conversation in Hartford still about the kindergarten age. Because we have the Transition K, we think that we're going to be able to, between preschool, pre-K, and Transition K, be able to take care of our youngest learners who are turning, you know, who won't be turning five until September 2nd, all the way to December 31st. So, this is just making our policy current with current legislation, unless we hear otherwise.
The thought was, if I remember correctly, when we had a discussion during the first reading, was that we were, it seemed to make sense, you know, again, I'm summarizing in synopsis, not speaking for the board, but just my understanding of what was discussed was that passing this now was fine, because if anything does change on the state level, we just go back and revise it to match.
That's right.
But otherwise, this makes us current to what is currently understood to be the law of the state.
Right. That's correct.
Yeah, it's almost impossible to future-proof all of our policies because...
Things are always changing in Hartford.
Yes, every time Hartford meets, stuff gets changed, so, yes, Dean?
Our, I don't know how long our pre-K programs have been in place. Have we seen increasing enrollments, declining enrollments? Do the enrollments move along with, correlate with, the general school population inflation, deflation? And I don't know if you know anything about trends at the state level, because I've been thinking, to be honest, I've been thinking about why the state moved toward this requirement that should be five by September, because what it does is it shifts kids who would have gone to kindergarten into pre-K.
Or preschool, or something, right?
Yeah, so the cynical part of me is thinking, let's see, if the numbers of pre-K enrollment are actually not rising, is this the state's way of saying, I know how to boost the numbers, and therefore, the requirement for pre-K, we'll just shift some of the K kids out of pre-K and see, you see? You see, we need all this pre-K capacity.
I think because we're the only state in the union to have four-year-olds entering kindergarten, and because our teachers have been saying for a while that really with the Connecticut Core Standards and the expectation with literacy and mathematics, that it would be, make more sense for them to be five. But I see what you're saying, and certainly, we also have, we're the fiduciary of about a half million dollar early childhood fund. We just had an early childhood exhibit on Saturday that was in the pouring rain, so well-attended between our partners and our families. It was a wonderful event, and I was hearing loud and clear from the partners that they probably are seeing some increased interest, but with that half million dollars, that means more Groton students are able to have free-of-charge preschool, and that's coming from state funding. So, besides our school programs, we also have this program too.
I suppose ultimately, my concern is for those, I'm not going to use the word precocious, but something like that, the four-year-olds or the four-and-a-half-year-olds that could handle kindergarten, but are, as long as we have a pathway for them to be able to prove that they should be...
So, there's a waiver process, there's a waiver process, and all of our, all of our students entering kindergarten are being assessed this spring. They're coming into Mary Morrison, we're going out to other facilities to make it easier for families, and that process is taking place. You're right.
All right, as long as that actually works.
Yeah, we're hopeful. Yep.
Susan? Not that there's anything we can do about it, but to your knowledge, is this waiver process for a single year, or might that waiver process be available to a four-year-old?
I'm not sure. I know it's in the law right now as it is. I haven't heard otherwise that it's going to change, so there is a waiver process. It hasn't been real clear about, every community is doing it a little differently. Fortunately, Groton has had a really good process using Upbridge and using other pieces to evaluate, and it's worked out well for us, and it's been helpful, because we've been able to identify those kids who really weren't ready because they were four, and it often is those later fall days. There's certainly a lot of September, maybe October, students who are going to be ready, so we'll have to see how that all works.
Yeah, strictly speaking, they're not four, because they would have, the original requirement was that they would turn five somewhere during the year. What was it, was it January or December or...?
They were turning five by January one, so you could have a four-year-old...
So, they're almost, they were, under the original rules, they were almost five, they were not quite five. There's a big difference between turning four and almost turning five.
Well, and almost turning five all the way in December, January is a stretch, because those kids can be sometimes two years younger, especially if families have decided to hold back kids and think that they needed another year for readiness, so. But it'll be interesting. I'll keep you posted.
Also, along those lines, I'd be curious to know statistically, like, how much that would change on the other end, as far as, like, you know, we have the occurrence of 17-year-old graduates, where there's sort of a period of time where, you know, they're out of high school, but still, you know, legally...
But they can be very mature, those 17-year-olds. The one I know is very mature.
Can we mandate that they go into...
So, everyone is different, right?
Yeah, no, in general, I'm just like curious to know how numerically that works out. It's more of just a trivial, there's no judgment on anyone's age or experience of maturity. It's just curiosity, see mathematically how it works out.
I know, that would be an interesting study. I'm going to have to look into that.
That actually, that'd be my mind first, that's, I'd be interested too.
I mean, there has to be some kind of effect.
I have a lot of friends who are going to be 17 when they graduate if we vote on their date. So, I'd be particularly interested.
One of my children was 17 when they graduated as well, so, yeah.
Rob?
So, the school district doesn't have, that specifically us don't have pre-K or that Transition K that we were speaking of?
Our school district?
Yeah, under our kind of purview?
We do. We actually have preschool for, you know, children who have been identified in special education and also their model, or their peers. And then we have pre-K, which is a half-day program at each Thames River and Mystic River, and then we have a Transition K district program also at Thames River.
Okay, so then by this, wouldn't we actually, yes, we do serve children under the age of five?
But there's going to be a third of the population that won't have services unless we, you know, extend our Transition K program. So, we feel that with the programs that we have, we'll be able to really, and then the partners that we have in those extra seats, we'll be able to take care of kids who don't get the waiver for kindergarten and need that extra time.
Do we have an estimate for how many kids this would be?
I think it's about a third of the class. We looked at this year's class, and I think it was, the number was, our kindergarten this year is almost 400 students, so we've seen bigger kindergartens, but it's about 100 of the 400, I think, maybe a quarter. Yeah. But we're getting the data now for the new class, which is the class that's going to be affected, so we'll let you know as those numbers come in.
I just get confused by the fact that it says we shall provide for five and older. Does that mean it's optional that we can serve underneath? Like, it just seems, I confuse them where that, like, disconnect of the four-year-olds, but we do serve them, but it's an optional or...
Well, it's not guaranteed, but it is in special education, so, you know, for children who are preschool, and once they have birth to three, once they turn three, they are, you know, with an IEP, they do require schooling. And then we always put in, you know, peers, so that, you know, it really balances the class.
Okay.
But we will attempt to accommodate as many under five as we possibly can. All right, any other questions, comments? If not, we will vote on the motion to approve policy P 5112, ages of attendance as a second reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That passes. Let's see, Jen, would you like to read the motion under new business for item one?
Attachment ten to approve policy P 5141.5, suicide prevention intervention as a first reading.
Okay, and anyone want to speak to this?
So, this has been really good work from our policy committee. We've really examined this and reexamined it, and then in the meantime, some more legis, or some more updates have come in from CAE, so that's why you see the new green language and some of the red.
I'm sorry, I didn't, Joan is going to kill me, I didn't get a second on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, Thomas.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Jen was first.
I don't want to get an astegram from Joan.
I know. And I don't know if you remember some of our conversations about calling it she, he, them, or oneself, but with this new language that CAE provided, there was no mention of any of that, so the way that they restructured the language, it really took that away, but there will be other times that we might have to deal with that. So, for now, the language has been shifted. There was actually also risk factors of youth suicide that were added that I thought were really important, that we needed to have in here, and then, of course, the mention of the district crisis intervention team and, you know, assistance that schools can provide as well, so.
Jay? Any discussion? Yes?
I have one housekeeping detail on the paragraph that begins, therefore, any school employee who may have knowledge, it should be assistant principals, as we have several assistant principals at several schools, so...
Which paragraph are you on?
First, second, right after the list of five factors, therefore, any school employee.
Okay, yeah.
Second line, it should be assistant principals, plural. Other than that, everything is fine.
Or they're designees.
Or they're designees.
Or they're designee.
Yeah, designees, okay. All right.
The other thing that's different now is we now have a national suicide and crisis guideline that did not exist before, so for anybody who's listening, if one is aware of a child who has exhibited any self-destructive tendencies, if it comes to our attention, we'll act appropriately to protect the child.
Or adults.
Or adult, or adult.
Yeah.
Dean?
My one concern with this is that it is potentially broad enough, and this is where we rely on people's common sense to provide guidance, but without that common sense, this is potentially broad enough to allow for what is euphemistically called gender-affirming care. I belong proudly to the heterodox camp. I am, for what it's worth, spitting in the wind of what is the current, the current approach, which is to call what happens in some places, and very often, gender-affirming care. And I think ultimately, we're going to have lesbian and gay children come out as the victims of this when they're older, but I have absolutely no problem with trying to identify children who are potentially suicidal. My concern is that children who, being lesbian, gay, et cetera, as, quote, "a risk factor", would then be, they would then be identified as potentially at risk of being suicidal, notwithstanding that they don't show any other, there are no other risk factors, and that the, quote, "appropriate action steps to be taken to address their mental health needs" is, would in their case be something like promoting, again, what's called today "gender-affirming care". In other words, I think this may be too broad, and this is why I hope that common sense and common decency would come into play, and we would not, in fact, engage in what seems to be the fashion or the fad, which is to say, oh, he thinks she's a she. Well, notwithstanding that he's 12, let's go with that and run with that. Like I said, I belong to the heterodox camp. I think that that is a disaster, and we're finding it out now, and we'll find out even more later, so, but I'm just going to put my, you know, put my cards on the table with that one. So, I don't know if anybody wants to address that, you don't have to address that, but for that reason, I'm going to be voting, I'm going to be voting to abstain from this until I hear more, because I don't know what we do in our district. We've been utterly silent on whether we are part of the, like I said, the national trend of following along what's done elsewhere.
May I? If I hear you correctly, I believe you're conflating two different things that are close but not the same. This is, all of the, because one is bereaved by suicide doesn't mean that the person is suicidal. Because one is disabled or has chronic health problems does not mean that the person is suicidal. We're identifying, as far as I understand it, subsets of the population where there are demonstrably increased rates of suicide, and therefore, we want to be sure that we pay attention to all of these publics, so if there are indicators of suicide, and I'm not sure that somebody's saying, I think I should be labeled as this or that, is a, that should not be a demonstration of suicide. A demonstration of suicide would be cutting, a demonstration of suicide would be articulating self-harm. When these things come, we want to be sure that it's not overlooked because we're writing it off to some other characteristic. So, irrespective of one's perspective on gender-affirming care, which I think is an issue that can be discussed, I don't think this has anything to do with that. I may be wrong, but that's my perception.
If I might respond to that one. The reason why I am, according to your lights, conflating, and I don't think I'm conflating, is because the chief justification for what's called gender-affirming care for minors is if there is no gender-affirming care, then you risk suicide, and so either the adults in the room will say, well, we want to prevent a potential suicide, higher suicide rates among these children who we've identified or self-identified as transsexual, or the child, him or her or itself, may say, may basically, to game the system, saying, if I don't get this care, I'm going to do harm to myself, and so this is tied to that. That's my concern, that this hasn't become an avenue for what I think is a very unfortunate, very unfortunate development in our society.
If a child is gaming the system, there's no way for a human being to look into another human being's heart, to know if they're gaming the system or if they're really declaring something. We, I won't speak for we, I will say I, I would not want to take the responsibility of not taking a child's articulated ideations and write them off as maybe playing the game. I really do respect your perspective. I mean, I share it, but I really do respect your perspective, but I don't think it is what this is addressing. I guess I've said it three times, I don't need to say it again.
It may not be, it just seems to be broadly worded enough to broach into this, what I think is a controversial area.
Do you think you could forward to the board the district's guide to crisis intervention procedures so that we can see exactly what those procedures are, and maybe we get a better, this will be a first reading, obviously, we can mow that over. Ian?
Oh, yeah, along those lines, I was thinking on how to articulate a response, but then Mr. Schulman took the lead on it, and I can appreciate your words. I agree, I think your concerns are another matter beyond the scope of this, of this policy. I would, I concur with Mr. Schulman's assessments on, these are just identifiable risk, possible risk factors. One does not equate the other, one does not, it's not an if, then, direct connection situation.
No.
They're just, you know, statistically, statistic tendencies. As far as like the gender-affirming care thing, again, that's not, that's another matter that's not addressed in this, and again, like, you know, I can understand your logical connection that you're trying to make. Again, I don't agree with the conclusion, but I can understand the connection you're trying to make, and I don't think it really applies to this policy. trying to make, and I don't think it really applies to this policy. And again, I think that's, that's another matter for another conversation in another arena.
Only reading, fine, I'm only reading the language here, and it was written very generally. It says that, that the mental health professional will make a recommendation regarding appropriate action steps to address that student's mental health needs. That could be, that could include what I just.
Well, but it, but it references the guide to crisis intervention procedures, and so I think that would be an interesting document for us to review.
I will send that out so you can see that.
And see if the care that you're mentioning is in that document.
Right. And the point is, I guess, that's the mental health professionals department, not ours. Again, our job is to, to, to triage the situation and make referrals. That's it, that's all this policy speaks to. And it gives some general things to look out for, possible signals, or possible, not signals, but, you know, demographic statistics, as far as like where it might occur.
Rob?
So one thing for me is the requirement for a school mental health professional to meet with a student, assess to the, or level of risk, and then make a recommendation to the parent. Oftentimes, in the lesbian, gay, and alphabet soup group, there is an issue with not wanting to have that be exposed to their family. Being ostracized from their family could create a worse situation for them than what they're in now. So having that specific order where they have to do, you know, it, it leaves that ambiguity of what do they have to report? Do they have to report why they're telling you this? Do they have to report the risk factors that you tell them? What's the extent to what they have to report to the parent on behalf of the child? I think that's ambiguous enough that I'm not necessarily sure if I'm comfortable saying, yep, they can go ahead and tell them whatever, but that's just.
How about if I send out the district guide to the board?
Yeah, for sure.
And then we can have Denise Doolittle come in, and she can kind of share with you kind of the reality.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfectly, I'm just, as it's written, it's kind of a.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. If there's no other discussion.
Got a question for you. Do we have, is this a time-critical issue? Because if we schedule Denise, that'll push this back a couple of weeks. If this is time-critical, we can vote for a first reading, but if it's not time-critical, maybe we could wait.
Well, I think even if you vote for a first reading, I can get this information. We haven't voted on the second reading.
Okay.
So that we can, you know, it, it's a process. The policy comes through to Board of Eds, so we can certainly work to get this out, and then you'll have more information.
Ian?
Before we move on, I noticed, Dave, you raised your hand a little while ago, did you just?
I just wanted one quick clarification that was not nearly as important as the discussion that was at the beginning of this session. Under bereaved by suicide, I just wanted to make sure that included knowing someone personal, or like a family member, or a friend, or anything like that, that had unfortunately committed as well. That's a red and orange.
Yeah, that you're bereaved because of another suicide.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Just wanted to clarify a few of the language, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So with the understanding that this would be a first reading, we would get the district's manual and be able to bring this back for a second. We'd like to.
Excuse me, Jay?
Yes.
Who seconded this motion?
That was, that was seconded by Ian.
Yeah.
And, and I, I withdraw my statement, Ms. Joan, you, you would never have sent me a nastygram, but you would have sent me an advisory.
No, I would not.
You would have sent me an advisory that I had proceeded without a second, but it was Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yep.
If, so just to be clear on the sequence, the district guidance on crisis intervention will be emailed out to us in short order, and then we go to a policy committee meeting where we.
We could do that in between.
Revise this?
Yeah.
Or, or make any adjustments if we feel necessary?
You could look at the April, put that on the April ninth agenda.
April, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not here April ninth, so you're.
I thought we were doing later April.
Oh, that's right, we were waiting for, I was waiting for Erica to get back to me.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm waiting to hear from you, too.
Oh, that's right, yeah, well, on a couple of things. Right, so actually, yeah, so I think that might be a, a good way to proceed if that's not already in the pipeline, is that with the district guidance, we're able to go as a policy committee in to this document, make any adjustments that we may feel are necessary, and then bring it back for the second read.
I like that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Because I think we've already pushed it back to policy once before, right?
It's, it's, this one has been a lot of discussion, but I want it right.
Right.
You know, it's going to take us some time, but we need to do it right.
Right.
So I appreciate everybody's comments.
All right. So with regard to the motion to approve policy fifty-one forty-one point five, suicide prevention intervention as a first reading, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right.
And opposed? So Joan, we have no opposed and abstentions.
Abstain.
We have abstentions from, two, from Dean and Rob.
And I think I saw hands raised out there, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Who all was abstaining?
Beverly was. Dr. Ackerman, did you abstain?
She's on mute.
Okay, okay.
So who abstained?
You.
Right, Rob, I thought you saw, somebody saw a hand raised out there for abstentions.
I did. No, hand raised for yeses.
Yeah, Bev was a yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So next, Matthew, would you read item two under new business?
Be happy to. I move that we approve policy P six one four six, graduation requirements as a first reading. We recall that last year, we.
We need a second.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Second, Thomas.
Thank you, Jen. Last year, we changed our graduation requirements for the twenty twenty-six and beyond to twenty-seven credits, and our change this year is that we're proposing is that there will be, help me here.
Financial literacy.
A half credit of financial literacy is articulated and specified.
By state law.
By state law.
And then that half credit was taken from humanities to keep it at twenty-seven.
Yes.
So that's what all this boils down to.
Yep, and the green.
Yep.
And it affects the class of twenty twenty-seven and beyond.
All right.
And we think financial literacy is a good thing for students, although Zoe.
I just had a question. So I'm, you know, like, I only have to, like, my graduation requirements are twenty-six credits, and I knew that before because they've been twenty-six for, you know, a long time. Is the twenty-seven credit requirement already in place? So does the class of twenty twenty-six know about this? Or are they, like, do they have to struggle, you know, junior or senior year to get that extra credit to graduate?
So the first class that is going to be affected by the twenty-seven credits is the twenty twenty-six class.
Okay.
And yes, the high school administration worked with us on this, so the, and the counselor should know, and so students should know. It didn't affect kids who were already kind of marching along.
Right. Knowing that there was twenty-six credits.
Higginson and Rob?
Yeah, I just have a question. So is the twenty twenty, class of twenty twenty-six is all in black, so that was the existing policy?
That's right.
Susan, are we going to encourage the class of?
We'll get you the.
I'm sorry, please, I'm.
I already recognized Rob.
I apologize. The class of twenty-six, how encouraging will we be that they take a financial literacy class?
It's a pretty popular course already, the personal finance, and so there are a lot of kids taking it. So I think it will be encouraged if they have room for it. You know, remember that, that they, they're a year ahead, so depending on what they've already selected.
And we do have the staffing resources to meet the demand?
Yeah, we do.
Thank you.
It has multiple, multiple department areas, I think math and business and humanities, all those teaching certificates can teach this class.
I can add very quickly, just because I was a TA for Ms. Jenkins, the financial literacy teacher, as well as the business and personal law, I TA'd that class all my first semester, both her, and was helping out with a lot, and was able to have a very close and good relationship with Ms. Jenkins, as well as also being a representative of the head, not head, but head tour guide of the giving tours to our eighth grade and incoming freshman students. I know that that was well encouraged at both freshman orientation and of our eighth grade tours to continue to foster a sense of urgency in taking these classes and a, giving them a better understanding of what this is going to be doing for them, so that they don't feel like they're just being forced to take another credit, like, you know, like this, this doesn't have purpose to it, showing off like the fact that you get to play Monopoly, learn how to balance a checkbook, and you'll be able to figure out how to organize your financials statements for college. Just open the day, open the floodgates and let them come in, like, they'll, they'll come running.
It's called math in context.
Exactly.
So now I will recognize Rob. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. Is there a particular reason why no grade requirement or GPA requirement is involved in your graduation requirements list?
Well, you have to be able to pass courses in order to get these twenty-seven credits, so you have to have, you know, a GPA that is passing grades.
Okay.
In order to graduate, so that is definitely embedded in this.
But if we're defining how many credits we need, it would make sense to me that we would define what the GPA should be as well, just as a.
So I.
That depends.
It does.
GPA is different here, depending.
On the level.
On the level, right. The course levels are all different.
So it's really about passing the classes, but we do have systems in place that I would love to share in a COW of how we're really monitoring that and giving kids support when they're not passing.
That's, that's more the, the, how are we, how do we know they're passing the classes? They, they just go to it and they get the credit, what?
No, there's a lot of.
Just not having any description about what the actual, like, requirement is to pass a class is kind of confusing to me, but if we have a conversation about that, it would make sense.
We'll add that to our COW if that would be a good.
There was a piece of that that I had not understood slightly differently, that the number of courses you had to enroll in and attend versus the number of courses you had to pass, could we add, put that in that package for the COW?
That's in here, though, the number that they have to pass to earn the right to be considered sophomore versus junior versus senior, so.
Seven thirteen and nineteen, I think it is.
Yeah. It's in here. But I think it would be a good conversation, though, to have in the support systems that we have in place.
If I may.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Does that, your hand raised?
No, 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 I was scratching.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and, and to concern, to, to address the concerns of, of Mr. Mead, graduation, the opening preamble to this policy does say implies, the graduation from private schools implies that, one, students have satisfactorily completed the prescribed courses of study for the several grade levels in accordance with their respective abilities to achieve. And then satisfactorily passed any examinations, satisfactorily demonstrated district's performance standards. So all that, I think, is what the superintendent was, was saying, was that that's embedded, and, and that's like a deeper dive, if you want to get into the nuts and bolts of how that is demonstrated.
Satisfactory is generic, you know, satisfactory, you could be showing up and congratulations, you finished this class. I just want to more understand what the expectation of satisfactory translates to in these courses.
That's probably more of a curriculum discussion, I think, when you get down to it, as far as.
Of course, we talk about that as a curriculum, but.
The class.
Yeah, and if I'm going to vote on something, I'm going to ask the questions.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, there was some discussion when this first came out, or, about what grades would be most appropriate to, to have financial literacy available for, and there was some debate, and since we have a couple of students here, I'd be curious to hear their input. That is, but to be clear, that's beyond the scope of this vote. This vote is just for the general twenty-seven credits, financial literacy being one of them, that's it.
Right.
But since we have the opportunity to speak to some students here, I wouldn't mind just hearing that as, as a tangential conversation, which is at the discretion of the chair because it's not exactly within the purview of this.
No, I, I love the participation of the student reps.
Okay.
So I took personal finance my sophomore year, I think I took it first semester, and it was, the class itself was, I think, was really good. Ms. Jenkins, she's a great teacher, especially in like, you know, the finance classes, it's what she does. I think if I had a slightly different schedule, or if I had more open space in my schedule, because I have, you know, like, all my blocks are filled except one, I think, so there's just, there's a lot of things in there. But if I had a different schedule, or if I had the opportunity to take it at a different time, I think I would have preferred junior or senior year, just because, like, personal, the first class, or the first part of personal finance, because it's a two-parter, it talks a lot about checks, budgeting, you know, things like that, which is important, I think, when you're, you know, in any point in high school, but especially when it comes to like college and saving up and thinking about, oh, where should I go based off of this? It, I think it's a little more helpful there. So I think if I had the chance to take it junior year, I probably would have taken it then instead.
That's a great answer, because that's the one that I had said, mostly juniors and seniors, but there are some sophomores who do take it, and especially if they're in the IB diploma program, or they're taking AP classes, or they've got a really full schedule, it can work out.
From the curriculum, to speak to the curriculum aspect of it, I believe that, and I, I do have a very good insight into this being taught the class, or helped to teach the class, excuse me, don't want to take any disrespect away from there. I was not to show, I was just the guy holding the flashlight on it the whole time. From a academic perspective, curriculum base, do you feel prepared that you were, like, you can take this class, you will be able to understand the material of it? I would not say freshman year. I would hold off till they have a general understanding of both a more advanced language, that I think freshman English does a great job of covering, and how to understand this more advanced language, because when we talk more bills, especially in our business and law class, it's very, very helpful for those kids to have taken a, either a civics class or AP government, which is highly suggested, so that they can have a better understanding of kind of the political history, kind of all this organization that we're trying to feed into that, but from a financial literacy standpoint, basic math, not to give a kick at him or anything like that, because he does very advanced math, but understanding from that basic level, I think algebra one is a prerequisite, if I'm, if I'm correct, it's written under our class booklet that you should, recommended, pre-algebra or algebra? You just need to know basic algebra and geometry from a curriculum, strictly curriculum aspect. I agree a hundred percent with what Zoe says, I think it's very influential, I mean, it's very impactful for kids to be learning about specific things that are real adult things later down on their journey. But I also took it my freshman year, and this opened up an entire opportunity, like a new world to me in the world of economics, which is what I'm going to be studying at college. So I also think that, you know, there's different levels, there's every, every child is different. If we were to have sort of like, I wouldn't call it an entrance exam, but to understand that they are well-rounded enough for this to be something that they can sustain, and that this will resonate with this them, because that's the whole goal here, is that this financial literacy will help them create hopefully a better future. I think the resonate, it resonating them with them happens more when it's more real-world applicable, such as like what she said in the junior and senior year. You're going to want to retain that information of what this is going to be doing is impacting your day-to-day life in weeks or months.
And there's the financial literacy part two.
Yes.
You can, you can continue your journey.
Yes.
Well, thank you, thank you for the input, I appreciate the perspective. Thank you.
Thank you for the asking.
So this may date me somewhat, but at least when I was in school, it was possible for students if they had to, to drop out of high school, I think after tenth grade. I don't remember whether it was an age thing or a grade thing. I don't know how many people, it could have been just family circumstances, something really dramatic, but you were allowed to officially without being considered a truant. Do, is that still in place? Do we have people who drop out in the middle of high school, say legally?
Seventeen years old, and, and they often will do the adult ed program, but we really try to encourage them to stay in school, and we try to support them.
I thought of this because if you, we were to defer, and I don't know what the numbers are, but if we were to defer the offering of this, such a course, until the, the last couple of years, the people who drop out are probably the ones who need it the most, and we will wish, we would, we would have offered the course to them if, in fact, these, these kids are going to be dropping out. I don't know, it's a crazy thing, we may be talking about nobody, or a very, very small group of kids, and they've got bigger problems than.
It's a smaller group, I think, yeah.
You know, the course in financial literacy, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just to kind of close out on that, I guess, you know, it may be more of a, a matter for the curriculum committee to look at, but, you know, what, what David said there about, you know, freshmen. you know, freshmen taking it and, like, maybe having some kind of, like, entrance exam, quote-unquote, you know, to, to gauge interest, background knowledge enough to be able to, to handle the rigor of the, of the course, could be a way also to broaden access to those who are highly motivated to, to do that at that age, or, I don't know, like, again, that's another conversation for another committee, so, thank you for indulging that tangent.
Little tiny bits to chime on top, just to make sure that the...
All right, thank you. So, if, I'm sorry, if we have any other discussion, then we can call for a vote to approve policy P 6146, graduation requirements as a first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Adrian, this is the motion that a lot of people are waiting for.
Yeah.
This is the one they'll be discussing.
I was waiting. As it was coming down, I thought I was going to get this one.
This is the one they'll be discussing, tonight and tomorrow.
Can I get this on video? Is this like...
This is a big deal.
If you would read that.
Yes, I would like to make a, a motion to approve June 14th, 2024, as a graduation date for the 23-24 school year.
Seconded.
Seconded by Rob. All right, and, discussion?
Thank you.
There's a, there's a new state law, well, a couple of years ago, right, that allows us, if we, if we make the vote in March, no matter what happens between now and graduation date, this date will, will still hold.
We have a couple days anyway, because we actually asked the kids to come an extra day than the state law sets, so they come 181 days, so.
Right, so this becomes final, so.
So, if I understand correctly, this makes it for, on a Friday?
Yes.
Yes, it's a Friday, the 14th.
As, as a parent of a senior, I say thank you.
Yes. This is what we do here, this is like tradition, we try to make it work no matter what.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we push it back to July? No, just kidding.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote to approve June 14th, 2025, 2024, as the graduation date for the 2023-2024 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, we'll get that word out.
Thank you, thank you.
You can help us.
The words are...
Oh, wait, the word will get out.
Yeah, it's probably already out. All right, so, before we take up the next two, I wonder if Ernie would indulge us?
Yes, he's waited all night to indulge us, we should have put him on first.
We, we, we pass these policies every single year, and every single year, there's mass confusion about what it is we're doing here, so if you would be so kind.
Absolutely.
And thank you. Ernie Koschmider, Director of Food Services.
Correct. Good evening, everybody, we're here to talk about the healthy food certification, it's our annual thing that we do every year, we have to renew it every year, and it's two-part, the first one talks about the foods that we sell to students, the second part is about the exemptions. So the first part, just so you guys are aware, is all foods that we serve to students, meaning snacks, and it really only involves the middle school and high school, meet the smart snack choice options, healthy standard that Connecticut sets. We can only purchase and sell foods that are on that list to students, they're the lower-fat, lower-sugar, lower-sodium, you know, better, healthy-for-you snacks. The second part is the exemptions, the exemptions that you'll be voting for are, potentially voting for, are to allow foods to be sold after the normal school day, at events such as competitions, stuff like that, fundraisers and stuff like that, we want the students and the committees to be able to do that, to, to raise funds for their classes or, or whatever, so that's the two-part of this, the second part.
And I know in the past, we've had board members that, that wanted to vote against the second, and of course, they're free to do that, but the impact is on all of those parent groups, booster groups, any, anything at the, the events, the impact would be on them, if we didn't pass this, that they wouldn't be able to, to offer that wider range.
Correct, and the specific language that you have is mandated by the state, that is actually language from them that the boards need to vote on, without changing any word, comma, or anything.
Yes, we've had board members attempt to amend the text, and we can't do that either.
Correct.
Or it'll invalidate it, so, good point. Thank you. Yes.
That was the presentation, we have a, or, wait, we made a motion and there was a second?
Well, no, what we're doing is, I'm just giving, letting him do the preamble, because we have two in a row, and I just...
We have to do part one.
Got it, so we're looking at...
We have part one and part two.
Item's four and five as a combination in this presentation right now?
Yeah, he's just giving us the preamble, the explanation, and now we're going to read them one at a time, and we can have further discussion if we wish, though, with the understanding that it can't be...
So basically, the, the first part is, item number four, is saying that anything that the school sells during school hours would be under this purview of nutrition, right?
That's correct.
And then the second part says that anything's done after, I'm just kind of trying to summarize and...
Right.
Anything that happens after school hours or outside of school hours, that's for fundraising purposes, is not beholden to those same expectations.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And this does come up every year, at this time, we have to pass it every year. Beverly, did you want to read the motion for item four? I'm just going around the room.
Okay.
Wow, that's a big motion.
On the motion pursuant to CGS section 10-215F, the Grotton Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempt from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable mails at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups, so move.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
A second, Thomas.
All right, and now, is there any discussion?
I have, I want, Ernie, a question.
Sure.
Ernie, I'm not sure if we do it, but do the vending machines offer any fresh fruit? Could we put in a, a non-immediately perishable thing like oranges, for example, which could withstand the rigors of being in a vending machine?
So that's a great question, Mr. Schulman, so, the vending machines aren't part of our control, they are put there by the, believe it or not, the state of Connecticut, and all the funds go to the Association for the Blind, they're maintained by ServoMation, which is a contractor for the state, but we have no control over them, no filling of them, or any other revenue form.
But they get plenty of fresh fruit, especially those little apples, when they come through the lunch line.
On our lunch lines, absolutely, but the vending machines do not have anything like that.
Okay.
I had a, yep, just a quick point, so, in terms of, because I work at this school store, does this apply the specific list that you have, that applies to the school store?
Yes.
We need to rework the school store, that, that can't happen, okay, that, we are, we're in, we're in a bit of, we're, we're in a bit of trouble, but we will, we will make sure the adjustments are made.
Yes.
Spanking word deferred for the...
We'll, we'll get you, we'll get you the list, we'll get you the canonical...
He could tell us.
I will immediately, no more research.
Is he covered by the attorney as well?
I would like to say the capitalistic perspective was put above the nutritious perspective in a 17-year-old's mind, that's, it's on my, I don't believe it.
Surprise, surprise.
I made sure I wasn't in that building when the school stores opened, so.
No, you're at Mary Lawrence, and now you don't have to worry.
All right, any other questions about this motion? And, so I'm not going to reread this, unless anybody objects, I'm simply going to ask that all in favor of the motion for item four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes, and Andrea, did you want to read a motion, or no? Okay, she says no. All right, so, we are back to Ian, would you like to read the motion for item five?
Sure. I move that the Grotton Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 1, 10-221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring at the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event, and three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held, and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Adrian seconds, any discussion?
Does it cost us anymore to transport the food there and back, or where, from wherever it came from and back, then? Like, how much does it cost for us to set up something in an event?
I think the PTOs and parents do it.
Okay, perfect.
It's outside organizations.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So this is...
Like the bake sale.
Bake sale, yeah.
Okay.
Basically, yeah, this just allows bake sales for, for booster clubs to operate a snack.
Okay, perfect.
A concession stand.
A concession stand, right.
That's the word.
Do we have any carrots at those?
We should have little...
Gee, I don't know.
I hate to see any of the spaghetti footers are here.
I hear the school store's having a sale this week, though.
Yes, so, it's actually going to be all free, and we're just either going to put it in the dumpster, or hopefully give it to a food shelter, and I will be, like, I will take 110% responsibility and control to make sure that we revamp that, to make sure that it's in clear accordance with the guidelines that are given, thank you for that input.
Thank you.
Because I don't want to be getting any of my buddies in trouble, because...
Yep, because you want to graduate. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, this is sort of off-topic, but while I have Ernie here, when I was overseas, we happened to open a drawer at the Airbnb we were staying at, and there was a little flyer for a local food delivery, a restaurant that delivered food, and of course, it being on the other side of the world, the translations are sometimes very, very fun, and the name of this outfit was called School Food.
School Food.
Right, now, I'm not going to read the menu, it's all in Korean, but the name of the outfit was called School Food, and I thought, wait a minute, have we explored the possibility of actually not just providing food for our students, but actually delivering food? We can make this a whole project, a whole business, delivering food to people who want school food, if it's good enough for our kids, maybe people would be interested in buying it. I don't know, I'm half kidding, of course, but I thought while you're here...
It is, it is an enterprise unit.
Yes, it is.
I would ask, it's not, it's not that strange an idea, but...
We could fit that in.
All right.
Anyway, I was trying to find a picture of the menu.
Green dash.
Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the motion for item five, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That was unanimous. All right, thank you very much, Ernie, thanks for sitting through this.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
We appreciate it, we appreciate everything you do.
We're going to skip six.
We are going to skip item six, we will get that information out to you.
Let's see. Do you need a motion to postpone it to a date certain?
No. So, Dean, would you like to read the motion for item seven?
I would like to read the motion for item seven, are you asking me to read the motion?
I'm asking you if you would.
Okay. So I move to recognize April 3rd, 2024, as Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the paraprofessionals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And, any discussion of this? Again, we do this for all of the different...
We do for all our groups, yep.
Yep, and based on a calendar.
Right.
Excuse me, Jay.
Yes.
I'm not going to do the Charles Farnham rule.
Yeah, we are passing that because we don't, we're passing over that because we don't have the ed specs in hand.
So you're tabling it?
Uh, yeah, to, to a future meeting, when we get the ed specs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we move the table?
It's not a table.
So any other discussion on Paraprofessional Appreciation Day?
I love the paraprofessionals.
Well deserved.
And I want to advise them and support them, I just don't want to read anything.
Fair enough, all right.
I might say the same thing about the administrative assistants.
I'll just say, as I usually do with these items, that, you know, the letter of appreciation is, is well and good, but let's also remember this when it comes down to the budget situations and the contract situations, where appreciation is, you know, made concrete and whole. There was some talk about possibly trying to do something more for the paraprofessionals on top of the contract, that was just recently approved, and so I would encourage us to consider that further at some point in the near future, on top of this letter.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the paraprofessionals for their hard work, I'm working with the students, and some of the jobs are not easy, and I know the pay's not great, but I truly appreciate everything they do.
You're here.
All right, any other discussion? If not, we will vote to recognize April 3rd, 2024, as Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
And that's unanimous. And again, we do appreciate what they do every day, I know it's a, it's a challenge, and they are the, the backbone of these classes. And, Rob, would you like to read the motion for item eight?
Of course. I move to recognize April 24th, 2024, as Administrative Professionals Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the administrative professionals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Matthew. Any discussion?
Just a quick...
I, I'd like to say the same thing about the administrative assistants or Administrative Professional Day employees, they do a great job also, we wouldn't have a school district without them, as well as the paraprofessionals, and I thank them for all their hard work.
And I'd like to say the same thing, and I would like especially to thank you for the many, many times that you saved my little self.
All right.
Jen?
Just a question, not, sort of related, do we have like a spread for them, like a smorgasbord, or anything?
We all kind of take care, you know, and do something, yeah, I think at the school level, and, you know, at the central office.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm good, it's, it's been covered.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and of course, we have an administrative professional online tonight, Ms. Ms. Joan, who keeps me honest. Thank you, Joan. So on the motion to recognize April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four as Administrative Professionals Day, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous. All right, so we will go around the room for letters, communications, and comments by board members on meeting items and any other items in their jurisdiction. Bev, would you like to start?
I had a suggestion from a, a couple of teachers about, let me see, about giving up a, Susan, you would know more about this, okay? Giving up a TLI day to have time to integrate magnet curriculum. So they want to have time to, you know, all the teachers to talk, like the science teacher, the math teacher, to talk about how they can integrate the magnet school curriculum. Instead of having two TLI days, just have one and, and let them have a day where they can talk and, you know, get their curriculum together.
So I'm, I'm passing that off to Dr. Phil Piazza because he works with the Groton Teaching and Learning Collaborative, which is representation from across the district of our teachers and our parish. So I think that's something we should put on that agenda for them to discuss.
Yeah, I'll, I'll note that, Bev, and we'll definitely discuss that. We have a couple more meetings before the end of the year. I don't know if we could, we can't really change the calendar.
No, not now, but we can look ahead for next year.
But we can definitely look at how those days are being spent and provide that time. So thanks for sharing that.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Ackerman, did you have any comments? Letters, communications?
No, not, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Ian?
Thank you. I received a couple emails from the finance director, as I mentioned earlier, in regards to the Northeast Academy utility differentials and the non-absinian account information. I also attended a number of events over the past month. I was at the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Mystic yesterday, and also the week or so before, I was at a cheerleading event where they're celebrating their accomplishments this, this season and also raising funds. And that was, that's always fun. And that reminded me that I hadn't really updated a number of things. Went to a marching band dinner. You know, I've been to a number of fencing events over the month of February, states and ECC. And I've been in communication with the Fitch Athletic Boosters, as well as the Music Boosters, and, let's see. Oh, yeah, dating back a little ways, I never mentioned this. I went to the City of Groton Black History Month event. And I also went to the Black History Month event that was supposed to be at Mystic Baptist Church. And afterwards, there was a More Than Words event, panel discussion. I know I mentioned discussion loosely, but I wanted to mention it under communications. As I said, I think that's a group that we should definitely reach out to and coordinate with in, in a way that, you know, maybe could influence the curriculum committee thinking moving forward. And let's see, also, back in January, I had the honor of being invited to speak at the Martin Luther King event at St. John's Christian Church on the outskirts of Branford Manor. And that was an incredible honor. So I want to thank the organizers of that event for that invitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Well, it wasn't planned. Well, it was planned in a way. I've been gone since the end of February, and so there is, I have not kept track. My wife was not keeping track of anything in her life on purpose, and so she pretty much tried to enforce that with me as well. I have a lot to say, and I, I don't think it's very pertinent. I had this all planned out. I will say this, though, today is Greek Independence Day. Zito elas, March twenty-fifth, eighteen-twenty-one. We raised the flag, took our first concrete steps, inspired by, among other things, this country's move to revolt against the rule of Great Britain. So we were part of a wave through Europe, and we were successful. In any event, that's, you know, again, Greek Independence Day. I'm trying to think of what else I can think of. Nothing comes to mind. I apologize for not being here at the most critical time of the board's life, which is during budget season. I would have had a lot of things to say, I'm just not going to. That time has come and gone. I want to thank the student representatives. I'm not sure how much longer you folks are going to be putting up with this. I expect Dave will see more of you than I might see of Zoe because she's got lots and lots and lots of things going on. She's a firehouse lady, that's what she is. But I want to thank you folks for, for coming to our meeting and our meetings and putting up with, with this. I'm sure you find this very interesting. So I think, I think Zoe finds it very interesting as well, although she will not admit that. Anyway, that's it, I'm going to pass it on to Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
So I'm just going to have one thing from the protocol that we passed tonight. I want to hear every single one of your voices when we're talking. I want to know what you guys are thinking. But I also want to make sure that the conversation moves orally. So please, please wait until the chairperson recognizes you to speak because we'll just be speaking over each other if we don't. That's, thanks.
Jen?
Someone reached out, a Groton resident. I just want to understand if the school monitors like the forums. I guess there's been some discussion there from either parents about school bullying and stuff like that. I personally didn't go and try to look for it in the forum, but just wanted to understand.
Are you talking social media?
Social media.
So we do have a communications person who watches out for that. And it's, it's something that we don't respond to on social media, but certainly pay attention to in the schools.
Perfect, thank you. I can bring that back to the individual who reached out. And I do want to say thank you for voting on graduation date because I was one of those parents harassing poor Joyce at central office.
Matthew?
I did some post-budget therapy. I put on my Grandpa Matt hat and read to the Transition K Kids at Thames River. That was lovely. Attended the NYPD Capstone Public Presentations. I wanted to see how our 10th graders had, completing their journey. I must have spoken to thirty of them separately, and my question to them all is, you're now in 10th grade. Where do you think you'll be in two and a half years? And the conversations were phenomenal. We had people who wanted to be autobody people and a woman who, young woman who said, I still want to be a dentist, but I don't want to give up my Carnatic violin. Just amazing. Four of us attended, I believe four of us, attended the Reading Literacy Professional Development Day. It was, it was very good for us to learn, and it was wonderful to see our faculty engaged. Attended the robotics breakfast, robotics breakfast, and learned subsequently that there, I'm not sure if it's the finals, national or regional, but there's a final coming up very soon in Springfield. And the, what they were told the entry fee would be a thousand or four thousand, and they committed to it and found out just before the Sundays, just before the, the Class of Twenty-Four fundraiser, that they were, had to raise four thousand dollars. So I, I just listened, they're talking about doing a GoFundMe. I don't know how we can be supportive of them, I just listened. Attended the Class of Twenty-Four fundraiser, and my wife put in the winning ticket, so we have the NFL autograph photo coming, I'm so excited. Went to the College and Careers. Again, I was just floored by the number of academic institutions, private sector, military who were there. I wandered around, I listened a lot, wonderful. And finally, the Class of Twenty-Four fundraiser this past weekend. Alene counted, I think she, she got lost counting. She said, I'm not sure if it was ninety-two or a hundred and two, but it was, it was phenomenal. And I was privileged to listen to my colleagues speak at the Martin Luther King event in January. It was a great therapy month.
Thank you, Adrian.
Yeah, I would like to, I've, I had a lot of conversations since last month and with members of the community about all the positions that we cut, and we'd made some really hard decisions. But I think, I, I never saw a total number, got a really good understanding of the total number of positions that we cut. So I went through a bunch of meeting minutes, and I tried to tally them up as much as I could. And it is a hundred and thirty-eight positions that we cut to get to that seven-point-nine-one. There were forty-three special ed tutors, twenty-five-point-five general ed or other tutors, three social emotional learning tutors, seven math tutors. So there were seventy-eight and a half tutor positions that we cut, five and a half security guard positions, two and a half social workers, seven and a half teachers, two administrative assistants, one and a half central office clerical position, twenty-five building substitutes, ten aides, one-point-five central office clerical. Did I say that twice? I'm sorry, I might have put that one in twice. One program coordinator, a guidance counselor, one custodian, and one maintenance person. So I would, I would like to thank all of those people for working for us. And hopefully, we can review this more and maybe try to understand what those positions, what they do individually and what, if we need to bring any back or if we can bring any back with other funds. I also looked into some of our history over the past five years and pre-COVID. And one thing that was a little surprising to me is our certified classroom teachers. In twenty-twenty, we had three-hundred-and-eleven of them, and now we're down to, in twenty-twenty-five, it's two-hundred-and-ninety-two. So the actual classroom teachers, we have nineteen less. And I think we actually have a few more children to teach, but we have something like seven percent less classroom teachers than we, than we did before. So of those hundred and thirty-eight, a hundred and nine were in the, the ARP grant. But some that weren't in the ARP S R grants were one social worker, twenty building substitutes, one maintenance position, ten aides, and three and a half administrative assistants or clerical. Again, I might be off on one-point-five on that because I added it twice. So I just would like everyone to know that, like, we've had low budgets for a long time. We've had, our, our budgets averaged over the last six years through twenty-twenty-four, one-point-oh-nine percent was the average increase. And in that same time, over that six years, inflation has been three-point-nine-six percent average per year for those six years. So our school budget has been holding and going, and that's why we're so far below the state average. So I hope, you know, later this week, when we talk to the community, we'll emphasize what we've done. And, you know, my own personal belief is we might have gone a little too far on this, and I, I really hope that we can, that we can do the work and address this and try to find funds or get money in other ways to, to cover some of these positions.
Thank you, Adrian, and I hope you all were, had a chance to see the video because I really said that there's really no more cutting to be done, that we really are holding tight to a, a very lean budget. And I called it a pre-COVID level services. So we have some of the services that are necessary, but you're right. It, it's really going to be a tight year next year.
In my, in my opinion, we are way shorter than pre-COVID. There, I mean, there's something like, I mean, how mu, what's the average teacher salary is? You know, it's got to be somewhere a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars once you put in all the benefits and stuff.
We always use, I think, for average, I think we call it sixty-four, do we? Because we have a lot of new.
He was loading with benefits.
Loading with, with benefits, it's going to be almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that nineteen classroom teachers, I mean, there, there's a lot of money that we've taken off the table to keep those, those one percent on average budgets.
Right.
And the, so, you know, we're, we're taking a lot from our school, and there's, there's a lot that's going to change next year. So hopefully, the community understands that.
And I'm hoping they come out to the public hearing. Yeah, yeah. Public hearing, come out on Wednesday, Thrive fifty-five.
Six P.M.
Six P.M. We need you. And our students.
Yep, and, thank you, Adrian. If the board will indulge me, I'm going to ask Dave, our student representative, if he has any additional comments.
Should I, is it the time to give the good news? College news?
There's more good news?
His good news, yeah.
So I am officially, after, if everything goes well at the open house tomorrow, I'm going to be committing to the University of Connecticut at STORE's main campus. I got accepted into STORE's main campus, but I also got accepted into a partner program that they have there for economic research. It's an international economic program that I'm going to hopefully look to continue, but it would start with me spending my first semester internationally. So I have to get special permission from UConn through this program because they don't usually have a person in this program. It's a partner program, different. That, they haven't had a kid like me in a minute. I don't think they've had one since oh-nine, if what my counselor up there says is correct. So I'm pretty, pretty, pretty excited about the opportunity to travel internationally for some such a young age. My family has always been a very, very big traveling family. I have a lot of them actually wearing my Norwegian slash USA collaboration pin because I am fifty percent Norwegian and I'm oftentimes in Norway. So I find that this perspective of a world-opening, world-opening perspective through this opportunity is going to be something that I am very, very thankful for, and I have to give a hundred percent of the thanks to both my parents and this school. I think that the challenges that I had to endure, specifically even in Dr. Rafka's IB chemistry class last year, which was hard, but everything, from any little thing that I've been able to pick up, and I will make sure that this gets, I don't know, I don't know the correct word for, reiterated in a certain professional form on Wednesday. I do intend on being at the public hearing. But I do have to just say like a huge thank you. I am a student, and I have a lot of kids that I get to talk to today. A lot of my friends were all committing to some really, really good colleges. And I have to say that that's because they took Ms. Hodges' AP class. They took that IB class, you know, they, they took all these really awesome classes, and they felt that they had the support that they needed throughout. And I know that I'm not speaking for everybody, and I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I can say from someone who decided to go half AP and half IB and took advantage of every single opportunity that this school gave me, I would like to say that, and I don't like, I don't want this to come off as I'm embellishing on myself, but I would like to say that I am a genuine product of what this community and what this school can put together. What's, I, I don't, and again, I really hate the embellishing part, but if I am an example of someone who took advantage of all of these AP classes. And Ms. Jonathan White's son, it was in all of those AP classes with me. So there is a ton of us who also did athletics, who also did extracurriculars, who also teacher-assisted for classes who were available and took on these roles in varsity sports and in sub-varsity sports and in clubs, and really just did all they could to get out there and be this big extrovert person, which not everybody is, and we completely respect that. But taking advantages of the opportunities is showing proof that there is something good happening in this room and that there's something good happening in this district. And zero-six-three-five-five, I can confidently say, excuse me, I know that's just Mystics, but I can confidently say that if you take advantage of the opportunities that are given to you in front of you at this school, there is a successful path that is to be laid out for you. If you take advantages of the Ms. Alanack, the wonderful, I can't say enough positive things about the ARP college coordinator and on college career fair coordinator, Ms. Alanack. Taking full advantage of her and our counselors and all the extracurriculars that you find around this school, there is no reason why this shouldn't be the standard. You were going on to higher education, or you're going on to a job, or whatever life has calling you. I would like to just say a huge thank you to every single teacher that I've had, every person in this room, for not only giving me a voice and letting me sit here and speak and hearing that voice, and from my understanding, it seems like my words are well-received and are not just heard, like they're bouncing off a wall. And I can say the same thing for every single teacher that I've had an interaction with, every paraprofessional that I've had an interaction with, every student administrator that I've had an interaction with. And from the basic level to everybody up top, I just, I have to say a huge thank you. This was an incredibly long process. I know for those who were parents of seniors or soon-to-be seniors or past seniors, college process takes a whole lot out of you. But I want to say that at the end of this, not tunnel of darkness, but at the end of this journey, I'm able to say that I'm coming out and I'm looking forward to a bright future with truly thanks to the work that you guys. out and I'm looking forward to a bright future with truly thanks to the work that you guys do selflessly every single day. And I've been waiting to say that all night and give you guys the big props, because you deserve it, and I want to say thank you. I have you to thank for my success, a huge part of my success, and there's other things that play a role into it, but you guys are so very pivotal in the changing and development of kids who, at one point, shouldn't be on the same track that they're on today. I grew. I'm just, I'll leave it at that, but I grew, and I, I'm very just thankful, and I'm hoping to be there tomorrow night to hope, and come out.
Not tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, right, yes, Wednesday at six P M.
Congratulations.
He graduated this Friday.
He graduated this Friday. Congratulations to you.
He wants to go on that trip first.
Yes, I need to go to Six Flags, I'm sorry.
All right. Andrea?
Wow. Me?
Yes, it's you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Eight fifteen. Thank you.